I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, the laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year of 2024 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located outside the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Stahl ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we rise for the Court of Appeals?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Can I just take the floor and ask everyone to stay standing for one minute? As you know, today, 9/11, we pay tribute to all our fallen heroes and their families and our friends, what our loved ones who have passed and we're still suffering that loss every minute of the day. So 23 years ago today, we all had a different look on our face and if we could just have silence for 23 seconds, that would go a country mile. Thank you. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Scuderi?
Here.
Mr. DeLuca?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Okay, I'm going to ask everyone to please make sure their phones are off and when you come to the mics, if anybody does come to the mic, to please speak loudly, clearly, so we can have it recorded and we'll go from there. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 11? And the meeting of July 17? I'm sorry. Moved by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. DeLuca. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have some new business here. It's the preliminary and final site plan is Tachi Group La Griglia, 740 Boulevard, Lot 7, Lot 124.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Hale, we're at Tachi Group. We're in a restaurant right up the road.
Excuse me, could he speak up a little?
Mr. Hale, can you please speak up a little so the audience can hear you?
Yeah, maybe they can.
Kathy, we okay with notice and publication?
Yes.
This application no notice.
Again...
Oh, mine, mine, I'm sorry.
We did notice anyway.
Yeah.
Representing the regulated restaurant, they purchased the property across the street, demolished the structure of the area, proposing a new parking lot for employees and valet. And I'll have Chris explain a little bit about that. We did receive both your planner and engineer's report and have no problem complying with any of those terms and conditions. Our engineer, Adeck, will take us through them in more detail of that, but it's not a minute, fairly simple application. One of the things I did confirm, Mr. O'Brien, that ancillary wall site parking is permitted as long as it's under 200 feet of primary use, which we are in this case. So, and there's some suggestions about Chris Fashon lighting landscaping hours of the lighting. So I'd like to, with that, again, appreciate the Board professionals and the Board staff for their time, so I'd like to call upon Chris, he's worn, and just tell us a little bit about the proposal.
I'm sorry. I was going to ask if we could swear them in and maybe our professionals at the same time and get this all moving.
Let me swear. Kevin, it's Christian. Gentlemen, with regard to the applications and hearings offered tonight, do you swear your testimony or show the truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, as planner and our board engineer, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show the truth?
Yes, sir.
Could you state your name and swear your last name, please?
First name, Chris, last name, Tachi, T-O-C-C-I.
And Chris is with a C-R-I-S?
C-H-R-I-S.
C-H-R-I-S, thank you.
Great. So, Tachi, obviously you're well familiar. Tell the Board a little bit about, I think everyone knows La Griglia, Spanish, of course, but a little bit about the restaurant and how this will assist in your operation.
Sure. So, it's my brother and myself, we opened up La Griglia in 1997. This month, we'll be celebrating our 27th year there. Owner, operators were hands-on, were there all the time. So basically, what we, our intention is, is for overflow parking and for employee parking to use the lot across the street. It's getting tight in that area now, there's a lot of stuff going on, so when we found this opportunity to scoop up this property, it was definitely a no-brainer for us. We're basically, you know, it's going to be mostly employee parking and some valet and we're going to utilize, you know, proper lighting and shrubbery and, you know, Ed's going to go through all of that.
And I know one of the comments from both your engineer and architect of the Board, I'm sorry, engineer and planner of the Board, employees using...
Crosswalks, same with the valet, using the crosswalks. You know, when we are using valet across the street, there's going to be multiple valets, so it's not going to be one guy, so there's, you know, there's going to be three or four guys when we reach that, you know, when we get into the holiday season, stuff like that. So there'll be, you know, it's, we're limited on parking. We have deals with Frank Mir next door, we have some deals with access doors. This just gives us a little more wiggle room, especially to the staff. And with Ellen J selling that other piece of property there, we just wanted to have a little bit more parking and it's nothing massive.
And then, again, landscaping, we'll have to provide additional landscaping.
Landscaping, I saw it in the notes, they wanted some trees by that back fence. I've actually already talked to the woman who owns the property directly behind it. Not a problem with that. She even said, you can rely on my property, but I'll work out the logistics on that. Whatever needs to be eliminated, we'll discuss.
And lighting, off-hours?
Off-hours, and, you know, I even saw the memo, you know, if we can dim them a little bit earlier and then turn them off completely, it's not a problem. The hours of operation are 5:00 to 9:00, Monday through Thursday, 5:00 till 10:00 on Friday and Saturday. We're not going to have customers' cars there after 8:00 because by that time, the restaurant's emptying out, so that anything that is over there is going to go back into our lot anyway. Employees will be scrolling out around 10:00 and they'll take their car to the left.
Okay, great. All right. Chairman and I have no further questions for the Court of Appeals at this time.
Does the Board have any questions for, how do you pronounce that, Tachi?
Tachi.
Mr. Tachi?
No.
Nothing right now, so we'd like to hear from Mr. Deck.
Okay.
And when you get comfortable, if you could raise your right hand, please. They're not, you think we should put it over there, they're not...
Yes. You know what, I was wondering, do you think it would be great, do you think it would be appropriate, he came up here with that and so he could point to it this way and so it could be seen and everyone can see? Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Deck?
No.
Yeah, he can stand over here, I'll move this table and then this way, everyone can see what's going on. What do you think? I think it would be easier, Stephen, and you could yell at him from there, just to see it. Much better, much, much better. Right?
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show the truth?
I do.
State your name and swear your last name, please.
Edward, little initial S, last name Deck, can you say?
The Board has previously qualified Mr. Deck many times.
Great.
I'm assuming if there's no problem, you can just...
Thank you very much. Right. Mr. Deck, obviously well familiar with this application, you received the professionals' reports. If you could, please provide the Court with an overview of the site plan that you care...
Yes, as Mr. Tachi explained, what we're doing is utilizing a lot where a building was occupying it previously, total, it was either building or pavement, it was 100% previous. The building had a fire and then Mr. Tachi, as he explained, decided to purchase the property in order to help his parking situation on the opposite side of the street. On this page here, the title sheet shows, again, 200 feet raised, we have, of course, property numbers of 200 feet, we also have the zoning chart along with the photograph and the zone that the site is located in, which is the Business Commercial District. On sheet two, is an existing configuration or plan of what was there prior to the building being removed. You can see the building and the pavement occupied the entire site. There's also a large expanse of sidewalk pavement between the property line and the curb line on the Boulevard. The existing ingress egress for the site that was previously there will remain as where it will be occupied by the property on the road. Then we go to sheet three, which shows a couple of different sketches. The one on the right shows how it would eventually develop. The one in the middle shows what was there before and how it was going to be demolished. And the one on the right is the lighting plan. On the one all the way to the left, which is the site plan, shows 10 parking spaces plus five, 10 parking spaces for the employees, plus another one, two, three, four, five parking spaces to be used for valet purposes. The lot itself is 50 feet wide. We are using the east alley side for the employee parking, which will be occupied by nine by 18 parking, wide parking stalls. We're showing two handicap stalls, requirement is only one. We were, the engineer's report suggested that we could eliminate one, which then might create another parking space, which we will look at, and if that is the result, we will definitely add an additional space on the property. We have the valet parking, that's parallel parking, and those are eight by 19 feet. Again, this is a private parking lot, this lot is not going to be used as a lot by pedestrians or people who are coming and going to the site. It'll be used only by the certified valet services, they'll be able to drive the cars in and out. The reason I'm pointing that is because once we have cars here in the valet section and cars here in the employee section, we will only have 15 feet of travelway between the end of stall to edge of stall. The required parking width for a two-way aisle is 24 feet. However, again, since this is a controlled parking lot with the valet attendants moving cars in and out, they will be able to navigate in and out of the property, move whatever cars are needed to access whatever area we need to go into or outlet. So that is something that is accounted for, at least in a way we configured it and figured that that would be a workable solution. And again, what we have here on the Boulevard is a plan for to apply the press curve, which would be the ingress egress of the property itself. We are proposing lighting, as you can see in that far right plan, two light poles, and we're meeting the minimum. There is a section below or suddenly in the property where our lighting fencing just fresh out of the property line. We are going to take a look at that as a comment made by both the planner and the board engineer, and we will be taking into account the dimming of the lights as suggested, and then we are also shutting the lights off at the end of this estate. So we can also, in the area where the light that, both lights actually, we will make sure there are recessed lights, so the light source will not be seen from adjoining properties and possibly would seal one that's towards the rear of the property, make sure there's no visible light source from adjoining property. We will provide comment or recommendation by both the board engineer and planner. We are showing landscaping here on the right side of the property. We're doing that just to have some sort of delineation between our lot and the adjoining lot, which is the veterinary hospital. The comment about the landscaping in the rear, as Mr. Tucci said, we can put something in that rear area, however, as you can see, we have room for that, but he, Mr. Tucci spoke to the adjoining property owner and they thought that they would be happy to have the landscaping on their side of our fence as opposed to on the parking lot side of the fence. As Mr. Tucci said, he'll discuss that and make a final decision with the adjoining property owner. That really is the extent of the proposed proof. I want to point out that we will have less impervious coverage than we had before. We will be meeting the criteria set forth in the engineer's report, also the planner's report, we will propose an additional underground retention and an inlet to catch the runoff of this pavement area. Again, we are already at a reduced runoff coefficient of our area, but we will even make that in a better situation with that underground retention.
Thank you, Mr. Deck. Mr. Chairman and Board members, no further questions at this time.
Any other Board members have any questions for Mr. Deck?
Oh, none for Mr. Deck, no.
Oh, none for Mr. Deck?
No.
Okay. I guess we're fine?
Mr. Deck, you want to...
I think so, Mr. Hale, that it's probably directed to Mr. Tachi.
Want to hang out? Mr. Deck's, just wait a moment.
Can you confirm that the lot is for the sole use of your corporation, La Griglia, and for no other purpose? And where I'm going with my question is, you have a couple of apartments in the area and potentially a new apartment building getting close to your property, and so no one will be allowed to park overnight or anything like that in your lot?
Except for my employees and my valet, yeah.
I think there was a request for signage.
Yeah.
I had a comment about signage for literally parking only.
Yeah.
Good question. That's it? That's it? Anything else?
No, we have nothing for, thank Kevin.
Mr. O'Brien?
A question would appropriate, Chair. A question would appropriate, Chair.
You're good. You can, you're ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Three times I was ready to go.
Can you take the light standard that you're proposing and the wattage of the LEDs and reduce them? I know it would be below standard, but we really don't need much light there.
I have no objection, the APAC has no objection. That could be something that Board Engineer and I can discuss.
Okay. So your next go-around, maybe you can make a suggestion to us.
I definitely, I would work with the board engineer.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
So that's lit up like crazy over there now.
The whole area is like, you know, sort of timescorched.
Yeah, it is.
Without the shows.
Minimal lighting is fine, we'll work with your board planner and engineer and address that.
Anyone else?
I have some comments. Obviously, this is on a county road, you're going to need county approval, so any signage that, I think there's a couple of signs that are located from the property that might have to be located and, you know, probably have to be addressed with the county, as well as, I also had a comment about shifting maybe the depress curve so it's more in line with the driveway aisle, or if you just want to make it longer, so maybe it'll be easier for valets to come in and out. And lastly, just replacing all the curving and driveway.
That's the usual recommendation by the county.
Yeah. That's it.
Say from both of you? Chris, I have a question for you.
Yes.
There was some talk in town that someone said that they thought that there may be a booth there where your parking attendant may be inside like a small shelter. That's not, I don't see it on the plan, but that's not anything in your...
It's really not necessary. I mean, if you want us to put one...
Oh, no, 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 I'm just asking, you're a scuttlebutt.
Yeah, the valets normally just sit in their car, you know?
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clear that up. Anything else? Anyone else have any questions?
No.
None?
Hi, Mr. Deck, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, maybe we should...
Yeah, I was just going to let Mr. Deck clear out and I'll make my motion.
Yes?
Yes, it's about that. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we open this hearing to the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application only? Okay, seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mickich, 725 Monmouth Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Mickich.
I couldn't see, I couldn't see the player, brass is there.
Okay.
Is that, is the parking across the street from La Griglia?
Yes.
Where the, next to the...
Veterinarian. Next to the veterinarian?
Yeah.
Right? There was a fire in the building there, they're knocking that...
I didn't know there was a fire.
Yes.
All right, so that's actually a lot.
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is, will it be valet parking or customer parking?
Only valet parking for five cars and the rest would be for the employees of La Griglia Restaurant.
Okay, so customers are not going to be able to park there by themselves?
No, they cannot pull in.
Okay, because I have a concern about the traffic and the crossing.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I got.
It would be of the same standard that La Griglia holds now in their parking lot. You can't just pull in, there has to be a valet attendant taking your car to the spot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Signage will indicate not just parking to the restaurant, parking valet and employee also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none?
I make a motion to close the hearing to the public.
Second. Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
The Board, do we have any comments here about this application? Seeing none, it's a pretty clean application. Is there a motion? I'm sorry?
What are we voting on, whether we, are we voting on this?
Yeah, that's the stage we're at right now.
I guess what is the criteria that we're voting against on? What do we think is good for the town, what do we need to require?
So, yeah, the thing is, is that before us was a plan that showed what, exactly what they want to do. It's in compliance, they didn't really have to notice, but they did anyway. So now, it's if it meets the criteria of our town, and basically, that's what you're voting on. It's a very, very unique situation, you know, a vote on something like this because some people may not like it, but some people may. But the thing is, you have to look and see what our ordinances tell us to do. We may all not like a purple house, but the ordinance says it's okay, you know, then we have to look at it from that perspective.
So we're voting on whether this meets the standards?
No, we're voting...
No, we're approving, we're either approving or denying the application.
The application. Just approving or denying the application that was presented us tonight. The testimony that we heard from Mr. Hale and Mr. Deck and Mr. Tucci was their entire statements of what they're proposing. We gather that information and then figure out how we are going to work that into this planning board and what we're going to approve or not approve for whatever reason. So if there is discussion, more discussion, you're welcome to, as part of a planning board member, you're welcome to discuss that with us now. That's why we open up to the public first, then we have our discussion, and then we either approve or deny.
Someone makes a motion to either approve or deny the application.
Pretty much it.
There hasn't been no motion made yet.
No motion made yet because there was about to be and then you had some question, but you could still ask the question.
Also, I guess I'll ask a question. I personally don't think it's a valuable use of space in the downtown district. My question is, since I don't think it's a valuable use of space right now, I wouldn't know. My question was directed to, do I have to vote yes because of what it says?
No, no, you don't have to vote yes or no because of ordinances or anything. Your participation as a planning board member is, your input is important, that if you feel that it's not a good use for the downtown district, then you have the right to, yea or nay, as we all do. This is not, if Kathy says yes, everybody better say yes, that's not how it runs. It is what you feel the use of that land is going to be used for.
Yeah, I guess that's what I feel, is that it was, I don't feel it's a valuable use of space in our business district.
Can you speak up, Stephen?
I don't feel that that's a valuable use of space in our business district, my vote works like that.
Okay, so that is your opinion, does anybody want to talk more about that? No?
Well...
I'm sorry, I don't know whose point to make.
Mr. O'Brien was...
Mr. O'Brien, you got to raise your hand a little higher.
Sure, I mean, I'll wait for the board to finish if you like.
No, I'm...
I'm going to make a comment too after Kevin.
I'm pretty much...
Very good. The application in front of you is for a minor site plan.
Right.
Minor site plan means that it meets all of the requirements of the ordinance. There are no exceptions. So, Mr. Dunn is familiar, as is the rest of the board, with the standard of proof when you have variance in front of you, there's going to be positive and negative criteria. When there's a use variance or there's special reasons for it, there's statutory criteria laid out. This one is a bit more nebulous in that the criteria is far more general. Does it meet the standards of the borough for general health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the borough? Not whether or not the use is appropriate because the use is allowed. So that question is off the table, but does it meet those general standards, health, welfare, and safety of the borough? And that is a very large area that the Board has got to consider as to whether or not this meets the word general standards for any devoted, not specific standards like how far is the car set back, how far, where's the lighting at. This is not specific because there's no relief necessary. Just minor site plan.
Good way to put it, good way to clean it up, thank you. Luke?
No, he hit the points.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Deck?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Scuderi?
I'm just looking at it with, right now, we have a longstanding business in town who keeps a beautiful piece of property, who relies on other business owners to supply parking for him to support his restaurant, otherwise he would have enough sufficient parking and he would be forced to settle, move, or do whatever. So we have a business owner, to me, that's taking proactive step to, probably at a pretty cost to himself to make that, so it's not dependent on other businesses. You don't know it's going to go on developing those other properties down the road. So I think it's, you know, good for the business, and I mean, that's technically weird to support the businesses and help them out if we can, so, you know, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the conditions we've been talking about with lighting, the landscaping, and underground pension and all that.
Okay. The motion is made by Mr. Scuderi.
I'll say a second, okay?
You have to do a second?
No, I said we need a second, Mr. Mazzio was just...
Mr. Mazzio made the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Mr. Scadiri?
Yes.
Mr. Demondo?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? And Mr. Please?
Not, not in the motion.
Not in the motion.
Okay. Thank you very much, have a great night, appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Tucci, thank you very much for continuing your business here in Kennelworth, we really appreciate you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Tucci?
Yeah.
Not Stanley.
Stanley.
Not Stanley.
That's Stanley. Yeah, it's...
He falls. It's Tachi.
Jesus, I just love this job.
Okay. Here we go, we'll give you a minute to exit there, I guess. Good job. Okay. Next up is the consistency, consistency review for the master plan 2000 Galloping Hill Road redevelopment plan, okay? So, in front of us, we have Francis. First of all, let me, let me just read you this here, this is the ordinance adopting the 2000 Galloping Hill Road redevelopment plan consisting of block 181, lot 1, okay? Before we go on to you, sir, Kevin, just give us a, just a quick briefing and then we'll turn it over.
Yeah, Kevin Swornin?
Yes.
What's your deal? Thank you, with regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you give shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, why don't you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Francis Reiner, R.E.I.N.E.R.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. As the board will recall, this matter was the subject of a redevelopment study that this board and our colleague, Mr. Reiner, performed back in April, May of this year. That study was adopted by the governing body, the Town Council, and upon their adoption of that, they authorized the preparation of a document called the Redevelopment Plan. That plan is the land use ordinance in effect for 1000 Galloping Hill Road, the former Merck property, former sharing property, and the specifics in this plan, as prepared by Mr. Reiner, are the standards that are set for the use of that property. And what's laid out in there are the uses that are allowed, the bulk standards such as setbacks, height... Land, right, thank you very much, landscape, lighting, things as, things such as that, things like you just talked about with the Tachi group, and they're all laid out specifically in this plan. Your role in this is that the plan has been adopted by the Town Council as of last week. Every land use ordinance in accordance with the municipal land use law is then referred to the planning board for a consistency review, and the board is to make a decision as to whether or not this plan is or is not consistent with our master plan as written. So, you're due to this evening, after you hear the particulars, Mr. Reiner is to decide whether or not it is or is not consistent, and you will pass that recommendation along to the Borough Council.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Chairman?
No, no, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reiner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having here this evening. Fran Reiner with DMR, I'm here on behalf of the governing body. As Mr. O'Brien had indicated, we have put together a redevelopment plan for 2000 Galloping Hill Road, block 181, lot 1. I'll just give a brief overview that you heard a little bit. This property was designated as an area in need of redevelopment without condemnation in May. The governing body then requested that we move forward with the redevelopment plan. Redevelopment plan essentially will represent new zoning for the property. Current property is zone OR zone. If adopted, the, the, the new zoning would be this redevelopment plan. On September 4th, we presented this plan to the governing body. It was then referred to, to you, the planning board, this evening to determine whether or not it is consistent with the borough's master plan. What I'm gonna do is, you have a fairly detailed report, I'm just gonna highlight some of the, some of the specifics about it. Most of the report has a lot of the boilerplate requirements that state law requires in terms of the redevelopment details, in terms of the, the plan components, as well as general provisions. I'm gonna start with page 14. There is a list of permitted uses that will be allowed on this property that are identified within, within this redevelopment plan. They include research and development, laboratories, life sciences, like industrial offices, which would include general, medical, business, veterinarian facilities, data centers, warehouses, self-storage, retail and service, public and private schools, student housing, public and private utilities, hotels, age-restricted housing, no market rate housing, I want to be clear about that, age-restricted housing only, no market rate, and assisted living or long-term care facilities. There's also a list of accessory uses that are typical and common with any of those permitted uses, I won't go through that list, but that's also located on page 14. Regarding the prohibited uses, in our September 4th presentation to the mayor and council, we had indicated that anything that is not specifically identified within this redevelopment plan refers back to the ordinance of the borough. The mayor and council wanted us to make sure and asked us within their, within their ordinance to add language which specifically states that prohibited uses for, for the manufacturing, distribution, and sale of cannabis would be prohibited.
Mr. Reiner, if I could just interrupt, we already have the ordinance in our town, so why the redundancy?
I think everybody wanted to just kinda cover themselves.
Just be sure?
Yes, yes, so we, we...
Seems like a waste of paper to me.
That was just done because it came up at the meeting and they wanted to just ensure that that language add was added, just to keep everybody happy about that in particular.
So, if you have to wear your seatbelt ordinance, we can have that in there too? Okay.
In regards to the bulk area requirements, which would be on page 15 of the redevelopment plan, the notion of this property, which is approximately 108 acres, is that it could and would be developed in phases, so the minimum tract area would be 10 acres, meaning that if somebody came in for a site plan application as a part of a phase, it would have to be a minimum of 10 acres, and, and, and it could be more than 10 acres, obviously. But the idea being that it's a 108 acre site, that they couldn't come in on a bunch of one acre site plan applications, minimum 10 acres, so it's a significant size that they would have to come in. Minimum lot area would be 10,000 square feet, minimum, maximum building height would be 100 feet, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that because of actual, there's a, there's requirements to that height. Maximum building coverage, 55%, maximum impervious coverage, 85%. Still have to meet all the NJDEP requirements for stormwater management, so, so although the impervious coverage is 85%, you still have to meet all of the, the new NJDEP requirements. Maximum floor area ratio is 1.5, minimum landscape open space, 15%. The minimum front yard setback off of Galloping Hill Road would be 40 feet, minimum side yard would be 10 feet, minimum rear yard would be 15 feet. In regards to the heights along Galloping Hill Road, I indicated that the, the maximum height on the site is 100 feet. However, if the building is set back 40 feet from Galloping Hill Road, it cannot, the building could not be higher than 60 feet. If the building is set back 50 feet, it can be between 60 and 80 feet, and if it's set back 60 feet from Galloping Hill Road, it could be between 80 and 100 feet. So, in other words, you can't go and build a 100-foot building right on Galloping Hill Road, it has to, there's a gradation in terms of how far max it ought to be in order to have a higher building. The, the maximum buildable area for warehouse would be, would be 580,000 square feet, and I'm sure all of you remember, there was a warehouse at the front, that warehouse was estimated in the plus 900,000 square feet, so this is, would permit significantly less as a part of this redevelopment. There is an enhanced landscape buffer along Galloping Hill Road that's required. Loading docks along Galloping Hill Road cannot be facing Galloping Hill Road, they have to be interior to the site, so again, the, the visual aspect of Galloping Hill Road was important within this redevelopment plan, and the residential uses of assisted living and/or the, the age-restricted housing would have to be within 2,000 feet of Galloping Hill Road, which means they could not be at the rear portion of the site. We have listed all of the parking requirements by use, so I'm not gonna go through all of them because there's about 20 of them. We did, we did look at them in comparison to your parking requirements in the current zoning ordinance, there are a few of them that are less than what your parking requirement is. We, we feel that that's, your park, your ordinance also has, and we put in here, a shared parking analysis that would have to be presented as a part of a site plan application if they want to go below that, but we believe because you were dealing with 108 acre site, significant amount of parking, multiple uses on that site, that, that having a somewhat of a relaxed parking for some of these uses is appropriate when you have this size site. We provided landscape design requirements as a part of the redevelopment plan, we required surface parking screening along Galloping Hill Road so that you have to have evergreen shrubs and perimeter trees, so that when you are driving around Galloping Hill Road, you can't see an open parking lot that is not landscaped. And then we have, we have a specific number of trees per parking spaces, we have screening requirements for dumpsters and recycling containers and solid waste handling areas, as well as service entrances and loading docks. So, all of those things are included as a part of the redevelopment plan. So, as I mentioned, the, the responsibility of the planning board this evening is to determine whether or not this plan is consistent with the borough's master plan, so what I wanted to do was, in a report, we, we identify the 2010-11 master plan, as well as the language in the 2022 and 23 reexamination studies, and I want to go through those and say why we believe that this plan is consistent. So, with the 2011 master plan, one of the key issues identified that's facing the borough back in that master plan was to specifically address the proper zoning designation for the, for the Merck campus. Currently zoned OR, limited amount of uses that are permitted on that, on that, on that particular site. Within that same 2010-11 master plan, it, it identifies proposed uses for the OR office research zone, and the proposed land uses in the master plan include office research district that will take place of the current industrial district, and they include wanting to allow offices, warehouses, science and research laboratories, manufacturing, industrial facilities, and public utilities, and I think it's important to note that the redevelopment plan provides all of those, and then also provides additional uses as a way to allow for flexibility for the property to be developed over, over time. So, so we believe that that, that the zoning and the permitted uses certainly meet that in terms of the consistency. In addition, the, the master plan states that, it has charts that say the commercial growth in the borough over the past 10 years has been fairly substantial, but much of it has occurred in the Merck campus, that's from 1996 to 2007, meaning that most of the commercial growth has actually been on that particular site, as everybody knows, Merck has left that site, so the idea of putting zoning in place that would attract uses and make that a more productive piece of property is actually consistent with what the, the master plan states. And then finally, a couple of other goals and objectives that are identified in the 2011 master plan regarding the industrial use was to promote the growth of industrial uses by taking advantage of area transportation infrastructure, and again, this property allows for those uses, it is close to the Garden State Parkway, so we believe that that meets the objective. And then the last one is that commercial, under commercial goals and objectives, to encourage the development of the borough's economic base by expanding the number of permitted uses to generate employment growth, increase property values, and promote improvement of and under utilized properties. And this plan does all of those things, we believe it's consistent for the following reasons. The redevelopment plan encourages and facilitates the transformation of an obsolete corporate office campus into a mixed-use development. Mixed-use redevelopment as permitted for in this redevelopment plan would provide zoning that could transform the dated obsolete corporate office complex into a vibrant mixed-use commercial, industrial, and retail development. For those reasons, we believe that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the borough's master plan, and, and we then, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions in the board? Mr. David?
Mr. Reiner, the building heights, do you know how they relate to the current buildings that are there, you know?
Yes, yeah, so it's my understanding, based on numerous conversations, that there is a building that is of about 100 feet, so, so the max height would allow for the highest building that's there currently.
Great, thank you.
A question on the permitted uses, as far as the market rate units, are age-restricted housing units market rate? Can they be market rate?
They can be market rate, but they're not, you're, you're correct, I, they, they are age-restricted, deed-restricted is permitted, they could be market rate.
And with a mixture of low and affordable housing?
They absolutely could be, include affordable housing, yes. Yeah, I, I misspoke by saying market rate, I meant is, is age-restricted.
Anyone else?
So, we approve all, if we go back with this master plan, we feel it's in the best interest of the town. When they build a building, do they have to come back to us for each one, or is it just now it's no longer coming to us? Because I, I wonder if...
They come back here.
Okay, because our emergency services, all that is going to be overwhelmed with this, and there hasn't, there's only been very little discussion.
If anything, when this, when, if this plan is put to bed, any applicant that's, wants to build here, it's the normal scenario, they have to come here for preliminary, find the site plan approval, whatever, so...
I, I will say that there, there will likely, there will be a redevelopment agreement, there will also be a financial agreement, and some of the concerns that you just mentioned are being discussed as a part of those agreements. They don't necessarily fall under the zoning, but they, but they are topics of conversation that the mayor and council are, are, are concerned about and are looking and moving forward.
Anyone else? Okay. You pretty much wrapped up?
I'm wrapped up.
Kevin, Chris, anything, what you guys?
Nothing further, Chair, thank you.
Okay. This is a bit unusual, and I asked the attorney if I was to open this to the public, he said we don't have to if we don't want to, but I think we might do the justice and open it up, okay?
Okay, I make a motion to open discussion to the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this consistency review? Okay, seeing none.
Make a motion to close the discussion to the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Board members, you have in front of you the applica, not the application, the, we are going to make a motion for this to be consistent with the master plan. So, we all had time to read it, we had plenty of discussions about it, so, is there a motion to move this forward?
I'll make a motion, I've been moving forward, that it's consistent with the master plan.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Ladati, seconded by Mr. Clemente, roll call please.
Mr. Viserna?
Yes. Oh, can I, can I just make a quick statement, and I shouldn't have made it before, but I'm sorry to put this to you now. Oh, I don't have to make it at this juncture, I have to make it for the next one, I'm sorry. Go ahead, keep going.
Mr. Viserna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
Yes.
Mr. Scadiri?
Yes.
Mr. Demondo?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, we appreciate you. Okay. Next item up is a, the traffic pattern review, application number 23-003, we'll call it, so we still have a problem with the address, 705-17, it's all over the place, but we'll get that coming. Okay, next item up is a, uh, the traffic pattern review, application number twenty-three dash zero zero three, uh, we'll call it, uh, so we still have a problem with the address, seven oh five seventeen, it's all over the place, but we'll get that concreted in. I just want to make a, uh, quick statement about, uh, this particular, uh, application here. Um, we already heard all the testimony. What we're here tonight doing is talking about the traffic study, and that's what's, we're going to talk about tonight. In addition to that, I'd like you to know that our board member, Mr. Clemente, was not here for that, but had time enough to review the documents, read everything, listen to tapes. So he is also eligible to vote on this, either yea or nay. Clear? Has everybody got that?
So, how many total will we have that are eligible tonight to vote? Will we like seven, eight?
Eligible voters, Kathy? Because what, class one and class three cannot vote.
And that's Mr. D'Amondo and Mr. Moore, he's not here.
Okay.
We have nine eligible voters.
Well, we can't have...
You can't have...
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
But we have more than...
We're acting as a zoning board for this, for this matter. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify, so just, this, the board carried forward last month's meeting for the sole purpose of the fact that we had ordered our own traffic study. So the applicant had provided their own traffic study, the board wanted one, um, so we ordered our own. And so tonight is for us to hear our traffic study, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to understand...
Oh, oh, I, thank you for the clarification. I didn't know I wasn't clear.
Yeah, so...
Sure.
Here we are.
Thank you very much. Joe Paparo, Forzio, on behalf of NATC Donuts Incorporated. This is the site located at seven oh five and seven seventeen Boulevard, that's block one twenty-four, lots one and two. Um, as was mentioned, we, uh, appeared before this board at the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting and began our presentation. This is a quick overview and summary. Uh, this is a request for preliminary final site plan, subdivision and variance approvals, uh, to adjust the lot line between these two existing lots, replace the existing Duncan with a new Duncan drive-through, demolish the existing retail shopping center and replace it with a multifamily building consisting of seven units, uh, including one unit which will count towards the borough's affordable housing obligation. The zone is BD, the Boulevard Downtown District. We are here for, uh, de-variants, uh, de-use variants relief for both the drive-through and the multifamily, and there's related variances and design waivers, uh, that were required. As noted by, uh, the board this evening, um, we provided operational testimony from Nick Di Amore at the last meeting on behalf of Duncan. Uh, we provided engineering testimony from Brett Scaphanets for both the Duncan proposal and the multifamily development. Uh, we also provided architectural testimony from Frank, Frank Trillo, uh, for the Duncan portion, architectural testimony from Mark R. Seal for the multifamily, traffic testimony from Betsy Dolan, and then finally we concluded our presentation, uh, with John McDonough, our professional planner who addressed the, uh, the use variances and the related variances and design waivers we were requesting for the proposal. As was noted, we concluded our presentation that evening on July eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-four. However, there was, um, some, uh, concern raised by the board, or request rather, that the board retain their own independent traffic expert to review our proposal and issue their findings. Um, the board that evening did open up the hearing, uh, for the public to ask questions and make comments of all of our witnesses and make general comments, which did occur at the July meeting. Um, and again, uh, the meeting was adjourned and carried to this evening, uh, for the sole purpose of hearing the results of your independent traffic consultant. Uh, Mr. Troutman, um, prepared, uh, two memoranda that were, uh, submitted to this board and provided to our office dated August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, and September sixth, twenty twenty-four. We've had an opportunity to review both of those documents. Um, and we're obviously, we brought back Ms. Dolan if there's any traffic engineer to traffic engineer testimony needed, but we'll turn the floor over to your consultant, um, for his findings. Uh, and again, I just wanted to thank the board, uh, for their attention and consideration. At the last meeting, you provided extensive testimony, it was a late night, so I did want to again thank you for that and, uh, for the opportunity to hear what Mr. Troutman's, uh, conclusions are based on his analysis.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
If you could stand up, James, uh, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you, uh, state your name and spell your last name, please?
Uh, yes, J. Troutman, T.R.A.L.T.M.A.N.
Mr. Troutman, it's my understanding that, um, you were requested by the board to prepare an independent analysis of the traffic. You did so in two memorandums, and, um, you're here tonight to discuss those. Does anyone on the board want, or does Mr. Farrell want us to go through Mr. Troutman's qualifications, or?
Well, he's, yes, could you just give us a brief overview?
Yes, uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My field of specialty is traffic engineering. I've been practicing in the field for thirty-seven years now, uh, conducting traffic impact studies for various types of developments, as well as reviewing traffic impact studies on behalf of the planning and zoning boards that I represent. And I've been accepted, uh, at numerous, uh, municipalities as a traffic expert, but I have not had the pleasure of hearing in Kalamazoo.
Thank you. Um, can you please do me one favor and, and just speak up? Because I don't know why tonight I'm having trouble hearing everyone. Maybe it's my age.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You have the floor.
Yes, uh, so, uh, we, we did a review of the, uh, traffic impact study by Dolan and Dean, and what we do as part of that review is we just check everything for, uh, standard, uh, traffic impact study elements and proper calculations. Um, Dolan and Dean are a very experienced traffic engineering firm. They, uh, are very reputable, reputable, and they, uh, follow all the proper protocols in doing, uh, a traffic impact study. So we would, we review the existing traffic counts that they provided. We review, uh, their calculations of the traffic impact from the proposed development. We review their calculations on what the future operating conditions would be. And, uh, I think the most important aspect of our review, which was specifically requested, was for us to do our independent observations of the situation that's out there at this corner at Michigan and Boulevard, uh, once schools had reopened and once normal traffic, traffic was back to normal, which, uh, I experienced this morning on the Garden State Parkway. Everybody's clearly back. Um, so we, we did, we did, uh, the review and, and put out a review memo with all of our comments on the plans and the study that had been submitted. And I think the more important memorandum is the, the second memorandum, which I'll get to, about what we observed out there and how that relates to, uh, the application that's before you. Briefly, from the, from the first memo, um, one of, one of my assignments, I needed to get up to speed on what you all heard at the first hearing, and I did that by talking to your professionals. I had several questions about, uh, what was agreed to, what wasn't agreed to, and I think I was able to get an understanding of where, where things were by the end of that night. Um, one of the, the, the key elements to me would be, uh, some of the changes to how these driveways, uh, operate today. And, uh, my understanding is that the applicant has agreed to, uh, turning restrictions at the proposed driveways, meaning you would not be able to make a left turn out onto Michigan. Uh, I saw one person do it in two hours. I don't know how they did it, but they did. Um, but nonetheless, uh, that, that's important, and, and no left turn out onto Boulevard as well. Uh, so those, those, I, I was pleased to hear that the applicant had agreed to those items. Um, I'd like to get to the, to the second memo, which is where, uh, we really learned a lot about the site. Um, I, I did do an independent, uh, account of the existing volume using those existing driveways. It was very consistent with what, uh, the applicant's traffic engineer presented. There was one movement that ticked up by about twenty trips, and that was the right turn entry move from Boulevard into the site. It was about twenty higher than what the, uh, applicant's study had said. So the overall trip count from my count was about twenty movements higher. Uh, the next thing I, I observed there was, um, the, the way the site operates now with those two, two, two-way driveways on a very small site, is, uh, you can have simultaneous entering vehicles from both Michigan and Boulevard, and all of a sudden, because it's a small site, they encounter each other immediately on the site amidst pedestrians, amidst parking and unparking maneuvers that are going on, on the property. And, uh, it, it just became apparent to me that if you could get, uh, those people, keep those people in their cars in a well-functioning drive-through system, you would get rid of a lot of conflict. So that was one, one major thing I noticed out at that site. And the other thing is, uh, again, with the, having the two two-way driveways and all the different conflicts, if you could organize the site into a one-way traffic flow and not have people coming in off of Michigan Avenue, I think you could go a long way towards having a safer site. So, but my overall conclusion is that, uh, having a larger site that's more organized with an efficient drive-through system, uh, I think will be, uh, a safer and more efficient operation from a traffic standpoint. Uh, I did, in my first memo, uh, mention some possibilities of some conditions or things we might like the applicant to agree to in, uh, item number five of my first men, memo, and these are just things I've heard other coffee shops, coffee operators, uh, state during other reviews I've done. And, and this, this goes to the fact that we don't want this double drive-through ever to exceed its capacity. Because if that happens, you would get in a situation where somebody could not leave the drive-through because they're blocked by too much traffic waiting to get into the drive-through. So that's going to require, uh, some attention from the operator as to what's going at, going on out there. Um, uh, we're hoping this will be wildly successful, but we are also hoping that the, that the system that's been proposed can handle all of the business that they're going to have. Now, if the business stays where it is, I think it will. If it ticks up a bit, which is what they projected, I still think it will, but I think we just might want to have some contingencies in place, uh, in terms of the operator having some eyes on what's going on out there, especially when it opens, to, to manage and make sure we don't have a locked-up, uh, site. Um, I'd be happy to discuss any questions or discuss, uh, if I missed anything that somebody saw in my memo that they'd like, uh, more information on, I'd be happy to discuss that.
Okay. Does anyone from the board need to, um, ask questions here at this point?
Or was suggested, you said, you said number five, you had some suggestions at this point?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll cover that. Uh, so that's in the first memo, um, item number five. And basically, uh, what I said was that, um, we need to make sure that the queue, um, does not exceed twelve vehicles. If you have a queue that exceeds twelve vehicles, you would create some onsite traffic circulations because people would not be able to exit the drive-through system. So, I went on to say that the area in front of the proposed trash enclosure should always keep o, be kept open. I, I defined that as a restricted area to be kept open. And methods for doing that, depending on how Duncan operates, would be, uh, track, posting traffic signs to alert motorists not to queue in the restricted area, um, having Duncan personnel monitor the drive-through lane and dispatch employees with handheld ordering devices to improve the efficiency, having Duncan personnel monitor the lane and be deployed to ask customers to vacate the restricted area, or, um, having personnel monitor that and actually block the drive-through with cones until it dissipates.
He said he saw one person turn left off of Michigan in two hours, right?
Yes.
So this is going to be restricted by signage. We had talked last time about possibly having like a mountain curb that physically blocks your turn left. Do you think that would be appropriate as a suggest or improve, stop any actual left turns on Boulevard or Michigan Avenue?
Yes, I think the, uh, the site engineer could, um, do a design that, that favors that right turn and discourages that left turn. There, there are treatments that can be done.
So that mountain curb would be in any place? Is that something we could, uh, I know why we're like, is that something that's more conservative?
Part of the, uh, conditions, when we were talking about different things back and forth, was that there would be a channel drive egress, uh, to the Boulevard with signage. So that was, that was brought up during the time of, uh, the, on, in July.
Chairman, not to interrupt, I know you have your, the, the time on going, but because that was brought up at the last meeting, it was already incorporated in a revised plan that went to the county. Both driveways include that channelization.
Okay.
So we're wanting to get out in front of that venue. It's, it's, we, we included it, and that's what the county's ultimately going to review, is one having that channelization in both driveways.
Okay.
So we'll still probably touch a whole group.
And there was one other observation I was just reminded of, um, for the right turn onto Boulevard, the way those lots are now with that retail building having that parking right in front of it and their curb cut literally on the property line, when you're trying to exit the Duncan now, you kind of have to jump out into the first lane before you can even turn. It was just a very awkward right turn for all that traffic. And making the lot bigger and having a proper driveway is, is going to work a lot better than what it does today.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Well, you've heard the traffic study. Um, we'll, we'll get to you all. Okay, so if there's no questions at this point, I guess we could open it to the public. But I have to yield to, uh, my attorney again. Are we talking about, when we open this to the public, about the entire application or the traffic study?
We're talking about the traffic study. At the last meeting, I recall, a number members of the public commented they made their views known. Um, and, uh, I know the issue, part of the issue, main issue was traffic, so the focus should be on traffic tonight, on what Mr. Troutman has testified to.
Okay. So is there a motion up the board? So moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the traffic study? Can you state your name and address for the record and put your hands on your hips as always? I would love that.
Okay, my name is Mary Mickett, and I am the Democratic, uh, head of the, uh, the district, uh, the count, uh, the third district for thirty years. So when you try to tell me about the traffic on Michigan Avenue, you're talking to a person that walked that every single day to the church. I crossed at the light. How am I, how am I supposed to get through the traffic there between the cars and tell me, "Oh, they're just going to stop, Mary"? Have you ever been on Michigan Avenue? Even with the light, it's worth your life. You want to turn around and say, and first of all, is it going to back up any traffic? What is, what is it do to Chuck E. Cheese on, uh, twenty-two when they have a thing? They have a, a whole line against it. Where is that traffic going to be here? You can't go around them to make a, a left, a, a right-hand turn onto the Boulevard. Are we going in that way?
Mr. Troutman, I think maybe you could, um, answer the questions, uh, more professionally since we have you here tonight and...
Yes.
And could ease her...
Yes, so, so one, one of the, one of the benefits of the application is that you cannot enter the site from Michigan Avenue. The new plan will not allow you to enter from Michigan Avenue. So there will be nobody trying to turn right off of Michigan into this driveway, blocking people from turning right at the intersection. So it's getting...
So they'll be coming out that way?
It's going to be an exit-only, right-turn-only exit onto Michigan. That's the only movement.
What happens when they back up? To make, to make that left-hand turn onto Michigan Avenue to go up?
They're not allowed to do that anymore, Mary. That, with this plan, they cannot make a left-hand turn onto Michigan Avenue. They can only go right.
No, 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 I said going up. Uh, there'll be no backup cars?
You mean queuing, you mean at, at the light?
So on Michigan Avenue, when you're coming up Michigan Avenue?
Okay, they're coming, they're coming out. Okay, they're coming, they're coming out. And they're making a right-hand turn. Now they're going up to the light and they're making another right-hand turn.
So I understand what you're saying now. So when the, when the person comes out of the Dunkin' Donuts, let's say, and goes out to Michigan Avenue, they can only go right. Then there's a traffic light, then they can make another right.
Okay. In the morning, the traffic is all the way down to the parkway, bumper to bumper. How are they going to get out of there into the, into the flow?
So the concept behind the drive-through was to take all of that heavy traffic, loop it around the building. So there's, they're really not trying to introduce people coming in, parking their car, going into the store and getting their products to go out that way. That's going to be-
Because Rich, they're coming out onto Michigan Avenue, right? What about the traffic coming up Michigan Avenue, going to 22, going to make the right-hand turn to the parkway?
They have to yield to that traffic, Mary.
Yeah, they have, yeah.
Just, I mean, we have to take a look at what's there now and what is-
You follow what I'm referring to?
I perfectly, perfectly understand. But we also want to take a look at what's there now, where traffic is coming in, out, all over the place. Now it's controlled. What they're trying to do is control it, making that right-hand turn out. Yes, they have to use all their driving techniques, techniques to yield to the oncoming traffic. But I think there's going to be, based on the testimony, less impact of cars coming in and out because it's now being introduced as a drive-through, which most of those cars will be going out on the Boulevard to the right. I, I hope I explained myself.
Yeah, there's, there's two exits from the site.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, into Michigan Avenue and also right turn on the Boulevard, right? So there's two exits and two entr, one entrance.
One entrance.
One entrance.
One entrance and two exits.
Correct.
No, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
With the truck, if, if you see the traffic in the morning, it's all the way down to the parkway. And I, I walk, and then don't say, well, it's only at this time, I walk there all different times.
I make a right turn, I should say a left turn, from Michigan on, on the Boulevard every single morning, so I know.
I've done both.
We've both been around, Mary.
After 52 years, yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mary, it's always good to see you.
I'll be back.
I know you will. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Geraldine Tonzola, 710 Kingston Avenue.
Good evening.
Good. Nice to see you again. I do have a question regarding traffic. We've been discussing mostly the Dunkin' Donuts. Now, this proposed resident building, as you know, I'm totally against any apartment building going up anywhere in Kenilworth. But the traffic for that building, now, you know how busy that intersection is and, and the Boulevard traffic, especially between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 p.m.? Now, my question is, the people, if they're coming from the direction of the parkway, they're coming up, and they want to make a left into the resident building where they have their parking. They have to wait for ongoing traffic before they can make the left, which is going to be tying up people behind them, backing them up, that they'll miss the light or cause people to try to go around them. The other thing is when they come out of the resident building, well, are they going to be allowed to make a left? Because say they want to go uptown, they have to cut, you know, they have to wait for oncoming traffic, get into the left lane, and then maneuver into the middle lane in order to go uptown. I just see it as a total mess. And I'm not even going to address the parking.
It, it's my understanding that they've agreed no left out of the residential.
And that goes through the, they can't make a left?
No left out onto Boulevard from the residential.
They can make a left, like coming in, but everybody coming out, they have to make a right?
Correct. A little better?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? State your name and address for your record.
Mickett, 725 Monmouth Avenue. Excuse my ignorance, but could somebody tell me? I, I know you mentioned it. How, where are we going to go in and where are we going to go out? How many entrances or exits are we going to have?
So on the Boulevard, you have one entrance in.
From the Boulevard?
Mm-hmm, one entrance in. You know where the entrance is right now? Yep, the entrance where the Boulevard is right now, into the Dunkin' Donuts?
You can only make a left off the Boulevard, right?
Okay, so that's a different question. The, the question you're asking is how many entrances and how many exits to the Dunkin' Donuts?
Okay.
One entrance in, two exits. One on the Boulevard that you can only make a right-hand turn to go out, and one on Michigan, Michigan Avenue that you can only make a right-hand turn out. You can't go left from either one of those exits.
Oh, okay. So where do you come in?
You come in on the Boulevard.
On the Boulevard?
Yes, just like they do now. That's not changing. You're coming into the Boulevard, one entrance in. But Herb, what they're doing is making it a drive-through. So they're not going in to park. They're going to be wrapping around the building and working their way out so they're being queued. I figured-
They're going to wrap around the building?
They're going to wrap around the building and they're queuing the cars to come out. So they're trying to limit the congestion in that parking lot.
I didn't understand on the Boulevard.
I'm sorry?
And on the Boulevard, the congestion. Because I've been stopped there many times while, while cars are trying to maneuver their way out of that parking lot. You know, you're backed up, you can't get, I think this will alleviate that issue.
So right now, what Mr. Ladati is saying, the way the parking is, they nose into the Dunkin' Donuts and they could also nose into the Boulevard. That's not happening anymore. There's going to be a couple of spots on the Boulevard side, but most of that traffic is going to be looped around. What's the total number of queue, 18?
12.
12, 12. So you've got 12 cars that is going to be moving. And they actually have it timed down to minutes of how quickly those cars are going to move, Herb. And they also have it down to the science where if one car was to take longer, they have a pull-off area where that car would get out of the queue and the other cars just keep going. So it's going to relieve that. What we're hoping that happens here is that that relieves the congestion on the Boulevard coming into Dunkin' Donuts.
I don't think it's going to happen, but-
Thank you, Mr.- Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? State your name and address for the record, please.
Gail Smyter, 27, South Michigan. First of all, I believe it's going to create a lot of heavier traffic. There, you're going to have Ford's, you want Ford parking spaces. You said a lot of people were doing mobile phones. Well, they have to get into the, the building to pick up their mobile phone, their mobile order. So there's going to be cars parking there anyway. And now they're backing out and you've got people coming out of the drive-in that want to get onto Michigan Avenue. They're going to be cutting them off. We're cutting what the people trying to get into these two lanes. Two lanes are going to merge into one lane eventually. There's going to be a backup. There's going to be, people are going to be crossing in front of these cars, getting into the queue or, you know, into these lanes. There's pedestrians running back and forth between the building picking up their order or people that just want to go in and order something, that they don't do it by mobile. So there's going to be more congestion. It's a dangerous situation. And you're, you're sending everybody out onto the Boulevard away from Kenilworth. I thought this was a friendly town that should want people to be here. And you're not, you don't have any place for anybody to sit down and have a cup of coffee and eat their donut. Just get it, get an onion on the road. So now you're eating and drinking your coffee as you're driving on the parkway. You know, come on. There, that's such a small space to begin with. Like everybody has said, the traffic is atrocious to begin with. You've got, you've got children going to school, you've got pedestrians, people going to work. And it just doesn't make any sense. All the cars are going to be idling in, in the queue. Well, there's more pollution if they're all just sitting there, waiting to go through. Oh, so that, oh, it's only going to take two minutes for somebody? No, you've got 10, what did you say, 12 cars going through, you know, merging into one lane? That's a lot of cars without being shut off. And the, the big thing I thought was, you know, being inside area, there's no place to sit down. It's just not neighborhood-friendly and it, it shouldn't be part of what Kenilworth is about. It's good the way it is, you know, they can improve things. And that's just my opinion. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so none?
Make a motion to close the public.
Motion by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So is there some discussion that we need to have here from the board? From what we heard tonight, we had, did, we absolutely did with, was prudent. We did what the public asked us, we got our own traffic study professional. And, and here we sit. So does anybody have any comments on where we should be going with this? Mr. Skedary?
So I think we had a big advantage by doing the traffic study. Even though the traffic study really didn't change anything, but it put this off for another month. And we have, I know personally, knowing what was proposed now, which a lot of times you're looking at plans, you don't have a good grasp of what it is. Well, now we had the whole meeting, we knew exactly what they were looking to do. And I had time to go back a few times, look over the properties, look over, you know, the proposed plans and having a good understanding of what they were doing. That Dunkin' Donuts right now is relentless. You go down there almost any time, you either go to the parkway or to go to Dunkin' Donuts, you're stopped on Boulevard waiting because you have cars backing out, cars holding in. So I think even if they doubled their business with this drive-through, I think it's going to improve that condition. Because they are backing up all over just trying to get into the lot now. A lot of the safety issues that some of the residents are concerned about, I understand. But I think it's going to improve over now. Now we have four, four times worse. The other things, I know when I go to that Dunkin' Donuts, I always pull into the strip mall next door and walk over. If that ever was rented out, we've been, well, Dunkin' Donuts has been lucky, I know they've owned it for a while, that, that, there's only one penny in there. Because if that was a full building, you wouldn't be able to pull in there. You'd have a lot more traffic coming in now. And you would have all those employees of those buildings parking on the backstreets, Kingston Avenue and Plankton and all that, because there's nowhere else for employees to park. So I think this plan, while it might not be perfect for everybody, I think it's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic and concerns. You have to look at what's, not what's there now, but what potentially could be there. And we could be talking instead of a three-story apartment building that has seven apartments, we could be talking about a three-story commercial building that we'd only be doing minor plan like we did with the Lurica parking. And we wouldn't have a lot of say in it anyway. So I think it's probably the best of both worlds for us to alleviate traffic or as much as possible and fix a couple of the safety issues that are out there.
Thank you, Mr. Skedary. Anyone else? Mr. Mazio?
I happen to have a site that I'm working on that's a couple miles away from their site that they talked about that they built that has the same setup in Edison on Union Avenue, if I'm correct?
Yes.
And so I've had a chance to buy my coffees there. It's pretty, you know, it, the queuing, it's a different site because they have-
Parking lot there.
Big parking lot. But as far as getting through the queue and getting your order, it's quick. It moves, they're very efficient, so I did notice that. It's not definitely apples and apples, but I did see how the operation works and you're definitely getting through the queue pretty quick, so just so you guys know.
Mr. Ladati?
I also, I kind of went there a bunch of times to look at there, plus I drive by there for work, so. I'm glad the traffic survey was done on the first day of school, doing seven and nine, which is probably a peak time. It wasn't done in the summer, there's maybe less people going in, you know, people are trying to pick up their kids, they're going to school, picking up donuts and stuff. So I'm glad the numbers are kind of showing on a pretty heck traffic-y time of day. And, you know, the first day of school, everything is busier. So I'm glad the survey was done there and it kind of matched the numbers that I was counting. So that's just my two cents on the traffic study anyway.
Anyone else?
So speaking as a guy who I just like here and walks, I was very concerned about this, but I think it's going to make a safer, to be honest. And speaking of community piece that, that you go on, you know, to have the Dunkin' Donuts in town, which offers us a feel. And I can envision one day, maybe you can sit out, I don't know if it's possible, but you know, you could put a bench out on that corner there and watch traffic, don't like your coffee. So there's still a chance for community to work and stuff. But this, you know, is the fourth biggest intersection in the county. So this is, it makes a lot of sense and I appreciate you, you know, helping too.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else? Okay, so for me, I feel, um, sorry, we closed the portion to the public. I'm so sorry. And I'm sure it was very important to. However, I, just to elaborate on what you said, was that we certainly don't want people to queue out of town. You know, it's, it's not what we're about. We, we want people to come into town. But taking a look at the present state, that's like an accident waiting to happen. Who's backing in, who's backing out, it's zigzag, parking somebody illegally in the other tenants' parking areas. I think they've done a great job with trying to address the parking and the safety and the pedestrians coming up Michigan Avenue, bringing the curb back to the Boulevard so that pedestrians can walk. Is it 100% without a problem? Well, nothing is. But it does make it better from what I could see. And I like the fact that there was no real rebuttal back and forth between the two traffic experts. He pretty much concurred with everything that was going on. And if you were here to tell us if that was just a bag of wind or did, does it really work? And I'm, I'm satisfied that it really works. So that's how I feel about it. So here we are. So-
I'd like to talk about how to incorporate some of the suggestions that are made by our traffic study as far as the control in case it does overflow. Like how would we incorporate that, how would we consider that? I know we touched on it. How does that actually happen in the operation? It's purely controlled by management?
Yeah, thank you. We had an opportunity to review Mr. Troutman's memo and we spoke as a team and we agree with his recommendations. In fact, in speaking with the operators, a lot of the procedures and protocol are in place at their other locations as far as using hand-held devices, having personnel monitor the queue by televised camera from inside and outside. So a lot of those recommendations are actually in place at their other locations. And we would have no objection making those five bullet points that Mr. Troutman identified in item number five of the August 29, 2024 report, a condition of approval from an operational standpoint.
So the five bullet points that he pointed out would be part of a condition-
I'm sorry, they're four, Mr. Mazio. Sorry, I misspoke. There's four bullet points in item number five.
You want to give us one more? So, okay. All right, so, Mr. Mazio, does that satisfy your question? Okay, so here we are. We need to vote on this application, I guess, in its entirety. Am I correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Can I, are we going to go over like some of the items we mentioned?
Yes, we have, we have-
Contingencies or whatever you want to call them?
Yeah.
Conditions, please?
Yeah, so I mentioned a condition before, but it seemed like Mr. Paparo already addressed that. However, there are more, Mr. Ladati. And we have a few that we talked about the last time. So if there is a motion that needs to be made, it would be with the conditions, but he may have addressed them already. So I have some, you have some, would you like to share yours?
Yeah, I just, we were talking about- Yeah, I just, I, we were talking about, um, special delivery times. But we spoke about, you know, I think I spoke last time about some of the bigger apartment complexes have, you can only move in at a certain time or have a delivery at a certain time, so it's not during peak hours. I think that was one of my major, um-
It was also with, uh, smaller trucks.
Smaller trucks, garbage pickup time, you know, stuff like that, so.
I can, I mean, if it helps, I can run through what I jotted down.
Okay, that'd be great.
Uh, so for the conditions that I jotted down from June, I'm sorry, from July eleventh, the rear, uh, fence behind the building would be a rear solid fence. Uh, the, there's a chain link fence there now. Uh, the applicant agreed to that at prior hearing. Uh, there is a request, um, for the move-in, move-out procedures for those four, I'm sorry, for those seven apartments to be off peak hours, so that doesn't conflict. Um, we would agree to that requirement. There's, uh, regarding the multifamily buildings, a request to replace the brick windows with faux windows. Uh, that was an architectural, uh, design improvement that the architect agreed to. So, tho- those elevations would be revised, uh, as part of the approval. And, uh, but, uh- Channelize the driveways, um, that was not only agreed to, but appears on the drawing that the county was reviewing. Um, and, and now these four bullet points are Mr. Troutman's letter. Those were conditions that I had.
I have a couple more-
Sure.
-that I jotted down and, uh, I hope we all remember. And, uh, one of them was the soft lighting or dimmers over in the EV area. Okay, uh, that was, that was brought up. And of course the faux windows, uh, instead of the brick. And we were in the middle of discussing the garbage on the Boulevard. Um, I don't think it was fully addressed of how that was going to come in, come out, what we were gonna do, going to do with that, if you remember. And, uh, yeah, that, those were the conditions that I jotted down that day.
Aye.
Uh, did you have something, Lill?
Yeah, well, we talked about the smaller box trucks, softer lights, move-in and move-out times, I had that. Um, deed restriction for the unaffordable unit, I think it's a three-bedroom?
Correct, it has to, yep.
Okay, do that, the faux windows. Consider a green ru-, I had considering a green roof. I don't know what that was about.
Yeah, I think the architect, um, testified that he would speak to the, the owner and the operator about putting in some green components. So I think that's-
Okay.
I think we can say that they'll, you know, he'll work with the board's professionals to see if something can be done, uh, to have a green component to the roof.
Okay.
That's, there's no objection to that.
All right, um, we talked, you know, no lefts out, uh, all, all rights, the Harbor Report, well, the reports. Um, both Mr. Troutman's and Kevin and Chris's, a pre-construction meeting, I think that happens most of the time. I had discussing bicycle access. I just jotted it down, I didn't know if that was-
It was discussion about whether a bike rack could be put in.
Yeah, okay, just, just a thought. And-
I remember discussion about bicycles, but not a bike rack.
Okay, bicycles and then we have- Mr. Troutman's reports. And that's it. Between what everyone's talking about, those seem to be the conditions. In addition to our normal pay taxes, any other approvals that you need. And you, you and county's gonna be chiming in on this in terms of, you know, the roadway.
Correct.
The Boulevard, so yeah, th- those, I think, hit the high points. And we're dealing with the, uh, use variance, eventual variances, uh, subdivision?
Yes.
And preliminary and final cycling.
Is, is everyone in agreement with that?
That's everything I had down.
I, I think, I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Paparo, you in agreement with all of those conditions that we just set forth? Because you had some, I had some, you have some, so we need to outline them perfectly so they're part of the applications that we know.
I think we've hit them all and I have no objection to what's been discussed on the record.
Okay.
Do you have everything you need?
I have everything I need and all, the seven members, we're acting as a zoning board here. So only seven members vote and the applicant needs five of those seven votes to prevail. Five yes votes.
With no class three council members.
No one, no three.
No one, no three.
They're not hearing. Class one and class three.
Oh, one, that's right, sorry.
Excuse me, is this a joint application?
I'm sorry?
Is this a joint application? It's either, they're separate buildings and different things going on, but it's all being-
It is not a joint application. The application was before us in July.
Right.
And because we heard that already, we don't have to hear it again. And what is happening tonight is that the board felt that although they had Dolan and Dean as their traffic professionals, we were concerned about the traffic coming in and out. So, the board hired their own traffic professional-
Okay.
-to, um, make sure that what we were being told is exactly what we heard. Um, and that's what we're really hearing tonight. So we all and everybody in this room heard the testimony of all the professionals. There was no need to bring them back here. So, our decisions, yes, sir?
I was just saying, I may be misinterpreting the question, but I think she's asking if we're voting on both-
Yes.
-properties, this, I mean, you know, both buildings.
Yes, yes.
So that's what she, when she said joint, she-
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not too, we're not gonna be voting on the residence and then Dunkin' Donuts, this is one vote.
If that's what you're asking, then I misinterpreted.
Yeah, that's what she said.
We're bo- voting on everything here tonight.
So it's already been agreed upon that, that you-
No, 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 we didn't agree upon anything.
The apartment building is going in, well.
The, no vote has been taken yet.
No vote has been taken. So the board members heard the testimony. If, if we had a traffic study professional here when the application was first heard, it would have been finalized probably that night. But because we didn't have one-
What do you mean by finalized?
Whether for or against.
Approved.
Approved or not approved.
Then it's gonna happen.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't been approved, let's be clear.
Yeah, it has not been approved. It, we, we had to come back and listen-
We're voting on that now, that we're-
We will be momentarily.
Yes. So what we're doing now is we took the testimony of July eleventh-
Okay, I understand.
-and the testimony of tonight, we put it all together and we make our decision. So-
On both, both buildings.
On everything.
It's one application-
One application.
Project.
Yeah.
One or one?
I, I, I don't think you can, sir. Um, I think at this point, you have, we already opened to the public, it was closed. We're at this point of our, uh, making a motion for or against. So, is someone going to make a motion? For, uh- I'm sorry, you out there?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, you wanna make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Poblici is making the motion to approve the application with-
He's not a voting man.
He cannot vote?
He can't make a motion, he's not a voting man.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're not a voting member for this application.
One of the seven that can vote, that have-
I'll make a motion and we approve project as presented.
Okay. Mr. Ladati made the motion to approve the application as presented with all the conditions attached to it.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second made by Mr. Clemente, roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Sarno?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
And Mr. Poblici?
Yes.
Seven up, thank you.
That's it. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Before you guys all exit real quick, can you just let us close out our meeting? Because it, it's gonna be loud and crazy, okay? Um, any comments for the board? None, okay, I do wanna make one quick statement. Uh, the planning board has sent flowers to Wanda Grimaldi and her family, her mother passed. So, um, I just wanna send our deepest condolences to the Grimaldi family. And, um, next is-
Oh, yeah, no one else had any comments, okay?
No, I don't know, I don't think so.
All right, so then I make a motion to open the meeting to the public for general comment.
Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Mazzio, all in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public.
But not on this applicant.
Now, we, now you can come back up.
My name is Mary Mikkich and we've been screwed. None of you people live or are blocks. We get stuck with the traffic, we get stuck with the parking. No, I did not get a message that this was coming up. As a committee head of my section, I should have gotten the thing stating that we were gonna have this about Dunkin' Donuts and about the seven apartments. What one of yous live where we don't? How many of the cars are gonna be parked on Kingston Avenue? I mean, those poor people get the cars from the post office, from the cars from, uh, Michigan Avenue? Now they'll be getting the cars from the Boulevard. So next time you decide on doing something like this, think of the people that live in that section. Yes, I'm a Hutt, I, I, I wish.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's done.
I agree with her, Gail Snyder, twenty-seven South Michigan. You got a giant building behind a residential area that is gonna be towering over people's houses along there. It's, they're residential, that's commercial out there. How come they can build an apartment building? I thought you had, have commercial down below, stores down below, like everything else. You know, you got, you've got too much going on, you know, for, um, it's not zoned for residential. So why is it going in as residential? Any answers?
Our planner, would you like to answer that?
That aspect was the subject of the various application that the board just approved.
What board, this board approved that?
The planning board of the borough, yes.
When was that approved? It wasn't approved in the last meeting, was it?
It was approved to the, the applicant rep, the applicant requested what they call a use variance, meaning what we wanna do is not specifically permitted in the zone, but we'd like to do it and here's why. And that was the subject of virtually all the meeting last, last July. And, uh, the board just approved the application, which in part, uh, had aspects of the building, the apartment building and the drive-through, which were not permitted. But the board felt that there was reason enough, good solid legal reasons and safety reasons to, to approve the application, which, which they just did.
That's the drive-through, I'm talking about the apartment building.
Both, both. Th- th- this was one application, including the apartment and the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through that we heard last- Were you here at the last meeting in July?
Yes, I was.
Okay, that's what we, that's, they had the architect, they had an engineer, traffic person, that's what we heard. And tonight, we wanted, we, the board was concerned about the traffic.
Well, it's so out of place. This is not Roseell Park or Garwood where they have, uh, the train tracks behind them. You have beautiful homes that people are residential in and now you're gonna have this towering building behind them. That's really changing the character of the neighborhood, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Herb Mikkich.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think you were wrong when I made a point of order. According to Robert's rules, you should have recognized me.
I opened the meeting to the public, Mr. Mikkich, and we closed the meeting to the public and then the board was making a decision. However, if I am wrong, I apologize. I will check into the Robert's rule and I could appeal to my attorney.
Everything was done properly. If you wanna make a comment now, everyone else seems to be, so if you wanna-
Yeah, I'm not gonna make a comment.
And if I, and if I did something wrong, I personally apologize, but I don't believe I did.
Okay. I think, I'm not, I'm not wrong, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I think before you opened the meeting, you had mentioned that the comments were regarding the traffic.
Correct.
Not the whole, not the whole package.
That's correct.
Okay? And I think the reason I asked for a point is because I think before you took the vote, you should have opened the pub, opened the meeting to the public to give them a chance, a last chance, okay? To get their comments, yeah.
So, Mr. Mikkich, I can appreciate that, but that's not the protocol.
Okay.
The protocol, the protocol, I mean, we all have our own feelings and I know you're very passionate about this, but it was open to the public in the last meeting. We did not have to reiterate that again. The same people are here from the last time.
And they did have an opportunity to speak.
And they did come up and speak and they gave their opinions.
I apologize because I wasn't here at that last meeting, okay?
And, and I, I'm not trying to be hard-nosed, but we have to do things of-
The reason I came up-
Yes.
-to this meeting is because I was opposed, I, I'm still opposed, to the board's decision, okay? I, I don't like the, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. I, I, I'm less likely to agree with you on the apartment building on the Boulevard because that is a gateway to Kennelworth, okay? Now you're gonna open up the gateway to residential use? I don't agree with that, okay? And I did not get a chance, and that's my own fault, okay? Uh, I didn't, did not get a chance to oppose this and I wa, I would have opposed it. I did oppose it at the last council meeting.
But that wasn't the venue for you to oppose what goes on with the plan, planning board business. So if you brought that up to council, you were in the wrong department.
I know it was the wrong department, but that was the only, that was, that was the-
I know, Mr. Mikkich, I, I'm not trying to be at hedge with you. I'm just trying to tell you what the protocol is and was. And we did, and I have to say, the board did everything properly. We hired a traffic professional, we have our professionals. We, we went down the line. I asked my attorney if a point of order, was I out of order with point of order? He said no. Uh, we opened to the public, we closed to the public. And, and I, I wish you would have made more statements when it was open to the public on that application. And I'm sorry, I just couldn't, I couldn't, it could have been an open forum then for everybody to speak. We had to control the meeting.
Well, then I have to agree with Mary, we got screwed. And, and with the lady, okay?
I-
You didn't, you didn't-
I respect your opinion.
You, you didn't listen to the people.
Yes.
Okay?
Well, we did, we really did.
More, no, you, okay, you did, okay?
We did, we listened.
Most of the people that came before this board at the last meeting, I understand, okay? Were opposed to the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, okay? And it wasn't, wasn't even considered.
Well, I, I respect your opinion.
Okay, my opinion, good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, Sereno Street eighteen or Nineteenth Street. Um, I had some comments, but since you passed already, there's no point. But it had come to attention, um, speaking of gateways in Kennelworth and all that. Some people live by the gas station, you know, um, it used to be the snow cone. And, uh, they were concerned about overnight parking of, uh, fuel trucks and stuff. I guess they're afraid, uh, I guess if the thing exploded, I guess is a concern also. I remember, uh, there weren't supposed to be vending machines and, uh, now there's a cell tower. I don't know if that was even allowed. So, um, like we have conditions and I guess, uh, building code enforcement. Is there any, you know, make sure that even the Dunkin' project sticks to what we, uh, agreed on. Just wanna make sure to, and then also, since we're adding residences now in commercial zone, is that kinda be with the new master plan? Are we gonna kinda convert empty real estate, commercial real estate, uh, to residences? Is that, uh, or is it a one-off, you think? I mean, I don't know if that's gonna be in the new master plan and, uh, I guess- That's going to be a new master plan and, uh, I guess, is there any progress on the master plan? Is there, is it pretty much going to be?
So there is progress on the master plan. Um, Mr. O'Brien spoke earlier. I don't think you were here when he mentioned that, uh, um, he would have more detail in the month of October, I think you said? So there'll be more detail outlined?
Yeah, there, the master plan committee, which I chair, is, will be needing in the next few weeks to more or less finalize the master plan, after which it will, there will be a public hearing for comment before it would be formally adopted. So the, the plan is that that will happen before the end of the year. All of that will happen before the end of the year.
And then we're, um, there was no parking for like gas trucks, that, when we passed that gas station on the Boulevard, so...
No.
I think that's a zoning enforcement's got to do that part of it, right?
No.
So I guess it's up to the people to complain, I guess.
Well, it should, if you see it, just go to the zoning enforcement.
I don't know if it was allowed or not.
It's not.
I tell people come to the meeting with...
No, it's not allowed.
Well, we're not involved with enforcement, so this would not be the appropriate meeting to come to. But mayor and council, zoning enforcement is handled through the governing body.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming up. Anyone else?
Make a motion to close.
Motion is made by Mr. Ladati, second by Mr. David, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn someone?
Salute.
Move by Mr. David, second by Mr. Mazzio, because he always does that.
Yes, he does.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.